Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Summerside Committee of the Whole meeting for December 3rd, 2024, here in beautiful historic downtown Summerside. I'll begin by calling our meeting to order here at 5:02 PM. Begin by calling for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Counselor Snow, move second. Counselor McCollum, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any changes, revisions, votes against? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. We begin each one of our meetings by acknowledging the land upon which we gather is the unceded Mi'kmaq territory. Abogee is covered by the historic treaties of peace and friendship. We pay our respects to the indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years. At this point, I will ask any member of council to declare a conflict of interest with respect to any item before them on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we're taking right along to committee reports and recommendations. First recommendation from the Bylaw Governance and Communications Committee, proposed repeal of taxi bylaw. I will hand it over to Committee Chair Counselor Adams. Counselor?
Thank you, Your Worship. So it was brought to our committee. We've discussed it at a few meetings now. We did go out to the stakeholders, so some of the taxi companies in town got their feedback. They did meet with us in person. There was a couple of them in one time, and then there was some emails back and forth. Nick, can you think of anything before we turn it over to Kendra that you wanted to add? It's pretty self-explanatory, yeah. Okay, Kendra, I'll pass it over to Kendra because she's been sort of doing all the research and background information for it.
Sure. Thanks, Carrie. So the discussion points that were in your package are actually very similar to the discussion points that were at the last meeting. At the last meeting, we went through the scenario more in relation to the addition of a rideshare company. And council requested that we go back out to stakeholders and ask for any feedback in regards to potential repeal of the bylaw, which we did. I phoned each of the local companies and then sent them an email inviting them to submit any comments or concerns. I did also offer them to come and provide those in person if they weren't comfortable providing. I'm sorry, Sandra. You asked me to do one thing and I failed.
It's okay.
If they weren't comfortable providing in writing. None of the three local taxi companies provided any feedback to that opportunity. Carrie did provide feedback, and I included their feedback. And there weren't any particular concerns identified outside of what we had previously talked about, which was, you know, there might be potential concern for licensing and/or insurance rates, which I believe we brought to the attention of council, that these are all mandatory requirements in provincial legislation. In any event, we did also, thanks to JP's crew, go out to, in the journal, we indicated that Summerside was reconsidering the taxi bylaw. And to my knowledge, and as of the date of our last bylaw governance and communications committee meeting, we had received no input from the general public. So it is the committee's recommendation based upon the information we've received, input from the chief and deputy chief of police, and from the committee's discussions that the taxi bylaw be repealed, and that's what's being put forward for consideration.
Thank you, Director. So I'll now open the floor to council. Just a quick little reminder in terms of our process and procedures here. So at this stage, we're back from committee, again, to committee of the whole. Open for questions. Any discussion to Director Gunn or any members of the committee. But following this meeting, then a vote would move to the full council meeting, which would be in two weeks. So there's no voting at this stage. It is an open discussion, and then this will move, the side will move to full council. So this is an opportunity for questions, comments, following up on the previous discussions here. So now I'll open the floor. Okay, are you going to move? So I don't hear any comments. Oh, Counselor Trenton, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. I just, I just, I just did a quick search and pardon, pardon me for that, but I do enjoy research, I guess. It's kind of a little thing I like to do. I don't know, was the committee, there's a, the Provincial Advisory Council on Newfoundland and the Status of Women did a scan of taxi regulations in regards to an incident that happened. I don't, was, did the committee review that, or are you aware of it?
Not aware of, did not review.
Okay. I do have it here. I don't know what the, I don't know. I've been at other meetings and people just tabled something to bring to the committee, which you can do, I guess. I don't know. But, but in short, it is a 16-page document, so I'm not going to sit here and verbatim read it, for sure. But it does talk about the need for a Newfoundland, having a criminal record check, a vulnerable sector check, and et cetera. So when, I guess the committee's looking at recommending, that the recommendations would be that there's no, maybe not enough additional support or protection. I, I just can't help but view the vulnerable population who are using taxis and then understanding that they're in the taxi one-on-one in that situation and their, and the potential of what could happen and what has happened in other jurisdictions, and I don't want it to happen in Summerside. I know our current bylaw doesn't screen prior to, but it does say if an incident happened while, and only advocating for that type of vulnerable section and the like, so, so I guess, I guess with appropriate.
Council minutes, and council will have the opportunity to review that before they vote at the next council meeting.
My own point of view, I think having a max, having a max rate makes sense. So price surging, so there could be a major, so I do think, I think setting a max fee makes sense, probably the same fee, I suppose, as rideshare, because it's, it could be any fee, what they have with the status of, status of women, so.
I will never get you two confused.
Same thing. I guess, to clarify, there are still provincial regulations that are put.
There wouldn't be criminal records checks. Both the chief of police and the deputy have reviewed in regards to the taxi service within, they don't do vulnerable sector checks. It's a one-time criminal record.
Okay. And the other business within the city of Summerside, is that we're all clear that when it comes to people doing a price.
Yes. What I will also indicate is there's nobody monitoring that.
I think, after reviewing the talking points here on the taxi, or anything else, if it's something that we can get our hands out of, and then, narrator, the minimal amount that they charge for other information, like what Counselor Trenton just tabled, it's certainly something that I will be, certainly we need to regulate the better.
So currently, the province under their taxi, whatever you want to call it, what are they?
Under the Highway Traffic Act and their insurance rules.
Okay.
In order to be operating a taxi service, you have to have a certain status or level of license.
Okay. And then a certain level of insurance?
Everybody has to have minimum $2 million.
Okay.
And that's in the legislation.
And currently, under our current taxi bylaw, we do require a criminal record check for any driver, but we're not overseeing it, so we wouldn't know if.
Well, if they came in to apply for a license.
Yeah.
They would have to get a criminal record check.
If they come in to apply for their taxi license.
Correct.
Individually.
Yeah.
So every driver in the city currently has a City of Summerside approved taxi, in theory.
In theory, in theory, they should.
They should. Okay. I'm just going by, I, I, sometimes I agree with Justin. I think, you know, the least amount of things we have our hands in that we don't need to. But then I also think sometimes you end up backing into something and say, just because there's been no complaints at this point, maybe it's because it's working. Who knows? Do you know what I mean? Is it just that it's working that we haven't had any complaints? We remove everything and then all of a sudden, everything starts coming in. So I'm just trying to really figure out if it's that the bylaw is actually not too intrusive, but intrusive enough that we keep things at a normal, I don't even know how to say it, but they keep rolling along without any issues? Or is it that we don't need to be in it? So I'm just trying to juggle all those and be interested to read what can tabled, I guess, to see, because, yeah, anyway, that's, that's my just comment.
And what, also, if this was repealed and things, you know, if any residents or police indicate that, you know, there are issues, then we can always re-instate a bylaw. Like, it's not like it's carved in stone that we can't ever take it back, so. We'd, like you said, is it, are things going smoothly because we have it, or does it just happen that we have it and things are going smoothly anyway? So it'd be a chance to, to see, I guess, if it is repealed, then, because people like, you know, the police and residents who use the taxi system often would be, you know, they would be the first ones that would come and tell us, like, you know, we have an issue, we need this back, so.
One, just one more thing. What, can somebody remind me why we looked at this? Like, what, what brought this forward? I'm trying to.
Yes, I can remind you.
I'm trying to.
Yes, I can remind you. This time last year, or a little before, Carrie came to the city indicating it was setting up business.
Rideshare.
Rideshare.
I don't care.
And it was brought to our attention that it didn't necessarily fit neatly within our current bylaw in terms of business model, and so that's why we started down this path. It was, I believe, one of the taxi companies at the time may have identified it as a concern. I don't recall who that was. It wasn't to me personally. When we did offer to meet with the taxi company owners, we did meet, somebody did come in, and they weren't necessarily concerned with Carrie being present because they didn't see them having a similar clientele. So that was just the one bit of feedback we received.
But Carrie has been operating since then without anything?
To my knowledge, yes.
So this was just an exercise, looking at the bylaw and whether or not we needed it came.
Yeah, there was a kind of a three-point, leave the bylaw as it is, revise the bylaw, or repeal the bylaw.
Counselor McCollum?
I just want to go back to the point that Counselor Ken was making on vetting, and then we talked about security checks for, for people's licenses. I guess what I'm wondering about, and maybe I've missed it, I know it's not our place to step into something because it's a private business, but I'm thinking of the riders that maybe if there was something happened or whatever, is there any kind of a mechanism that they can make a complaint, that they can submit something so that it would be looked into, so that it, I mean, it might not be a criminal matter, and I don't want to even superimpose that information. I'm just wondering, is there any kind of a mechanism in this information that if anybody did have an issue or complaint, who would they go to? How would they go about it?
So Norma, I can only guesstimate that, as with any business, if you had a concern about the business, you would raise it with the business owner. If, if we're not talking a criminal matter, otherwise, they would bring it to the police.
And I guess, I guess what I'm thinking of or about is if somebody ran into something that it was going to be really confrontational or whatever, and they, they just were uncomfortable to bring it forward, who would they talk to? Like, would it be like victim services? Would it be? I, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, sometimes people are, like, I've been working with abused people, and if anything ever happened or whatever, they, they might either just not say anything, or they don't know how to go about that process. So usually, there's a support worker that would help them in that kind of a situation. And I'm just wondering if there's any kind of a mechanism there.
I haven't, I don't know.
And neither do I, and that's why I was asking.
I, again, I, a client of the business, like anybody who took a ride in a taxi and weren't happy with the ride, or something.
Or if anything happened.
Yes. I would think that their first avenue would be to contact police when you say anything happened.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to plant that kind of a thought. I'm just, you know, like, there are some things that we're not even really probably thinking about that could or could not happen, and if there's nothing in the, you know, in that agreement or bylaw, and we're not police, but somebody was vulnerable.
They could, I mean, even under the current bylaw, there's, there's, you know, there's not a method of complaining to the city about the taxi. I suppose that somebody could bring it to their counselor.
Has there ever, has there ever been in the past, though, that it could go to the taxi company if somebody had any kind of an issue or concern over something that happened in a ride?
Well, they, they'd have that right, anybody, any client, or it's a service provider, so if you're not happy with your service, or you're, if the service has not met your expectations, but if you're talking something more like, I don't know, harassment, or assault, or theft, or taking advantage of. Those would be police matters that would take to the police.
As long as we can do that.
I do want to be clear that both the chief and the deputy have weighed in on this.
Okay.
They're not, you know, if, from what I, the sense I got from them is, if they had any concern that, about repealing the bylaw and the lack of protection it would be put in place for the riders, I think, they, both of them would have raised that issue, and they have no concerns with the proposal coming forward.
And again, I don't want to plant any kind of innuendo there, that, you know, I, I think they're very reputable people. I'm not saying that they aren't, but I just, there's that little part where sometimes you wonder, not about them, but if anything ever did happen. So that's good to know. Thank you.
I guess it's just, it's just the same as if there was anything, a theft or anything to happen on a transit bus that operates in the city. Like, the rider would call the police, or if they need guidance, and they, or they'd call City Hall, or they'd call their counselor and ask, what, what should I do? And then it would be referred on to, you know, or, you know, like you said, any other service in the city. If you went to, you know, the grocery store and picked up your groceries and something went wrong, well, then you'd deal with the company first and then escalate or de-escalate from there, so. I guess I was just thinking of it more in terms of a service, like other services in the city, so.
Counselor Ken? I just have one more question. And I just simply can't remember when we went over the bylaw. Are the criminal records checked, are those yearly, or is it a one-time check to get your license and then you are not checked again?
I want to say yearly, but I don't have it memorized, Nick. I mean, I can look really quickly here.
I think there's a renewal of the license annually.
One thing that was discussed in committee was that with the new rideshare service, and many taxis are moving this way as well, but with the online apps and booking through that way, it's actually providing a safer service for the, for the customer, because there's the tracking of where the pickup was, where the drop-off was, who the driver was, and that's all, that data's all captured. So there's that sort of things to consider, too, that is providing a safer level of service.
And Gordon's comment, I, that's why I sort of have a little hesitancy here, because our current taxis do not have that, like, any community I go to now, I'm not traveling outside of the province, usually you're using rideshires where there is that oversight, you know exactly where they're at, you know, who the driver is, you pick it up, like, that, that service is great, that provide, my concern is if we just, you know, there's no taxi license or no, and maybe I'm overthinking it, but I'm just, there, there's some security there knowing that my grandmother jumped in a taxi today with John Doe, who has his taxi license, has had a criminal record check, has had his, there is some kind of just comfort in that. Doesn't bother me personally, but I just, I don't know if the general public cares or not. I'm just, I'm really trying to think this one through, because, like, Carrie coming to Summerside, not Carrie Adams, the counselor, but Carrie, the drive, rideshare, I think there is some securities built into that, that we don't have in our current older taxis, which is fine, but I think there might be some protections within the bylaws, so.
Chair Adams?
I think we talked about this with, I think it was with Deputy Chief, and he did state that often when things happen around the city, they do have a good working relationship with the taxi operators, and they will get their records of, he said it's very common, not, even if it's not like an incident that happened within the taxi, they might have witnessed to something, so on. He said they, they very often deal with them, and it, it really wouldn't make a difference if there was, they'd still reach out to them like they would to you if you seen something, or myself if I seen something, so.
Counselor Ken? Thank you. I don't know which taxi company it is, but there is currently a taxi company that when you book, they send you a text and they tell you all that information. It's not as trackable, per se, like, here's a little car moving along, but there is already one company doing that, and there was a company that indicated when we had meetings with them that they are moving into more of an app-based, where you can track, you'll know the car, you'll know the make, the model, the license plate number, the driver, and I can't, again, remember which company that was, but.
I can verify that, because my 85-year-old mother-in-law is, that's how, her mode of transportation in town, and she's talking about now, she's got this, she knows when they're coming, or when they're going to be late, or anything. It all comes up in her phone.
So they're, as much as the taxi companies may be a little bit behind in the technology, they are all moving forward to something that really does protect the rider, and I assume that also protects the driver quite well, is, you know, if something did go on, protects both ways, but it is not as get in the car, no one knows what happens after that until you get out. It is definitely more protected now than it ever has been, and it seems like they will continue to do that, but, you know, until they do it, we don't really know, I guess.
I almost want to say sorry for talking, bringing this up, but it's, but it's, but it's, it's important, so. Just in regards, when we're talking about taxi records, I think right now, our taxi bylaw enforces that, like, the taxis have to keep records because of the bylaw, if you review the bylaw. So I think without the bylaw, we don't know if that would happen. Right now, we know. It's, 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 the bylaw is dictating that that has to be maintained. And so with that, that makes any crime that does happen much more easier to trace back for the police point of view, I would, I would say. And just two other, two other points in terms of Carrie. Yeah, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, you're right, that there's, there are actually, if, if we were to repeal, then Carrie would be more, provide more of a protective service than the city taxis. Just a couple of examples here is that they do require a criminal record check, they require a driver's abstract dating back three years, and can have no more than seven demerit points, age of the vehicle, kilometers of the vehicle, those types of incidents, even having to have snow tires or all-weather. It goes into that detail of what needs to be for Carrie, so I, I thought, okay, that's, that's, that's good to see. And the other aspect, too, and not that we want to compare to Charlestown, but if, if an individual went to Charlestown and tried to get, be have a taxi license, they're regulated, and if they have, if they have, I'm just going to, if they have, if they have a sexual assault charge against them that happened last year, they would not have a taxi license in the city of Charlestown. If we repeal the bylaw, if that same individual comes to Summerside, they have a sexual assault charge against them, in a year, they will be able to get a taxi license in the city of Summerside. So I don't, that doesn't sit okay with me. That doesn't, so I'll just, that's my opinion.
All right, thanks, council. I guess we'll be moving that on to full council for a vote. I do thank the members of the committee who spent a number of hours working on this and going through many of these initial questions. Just a couple other quick little points that didn't come up. We've too often talked about riders being vulnerable in taxis. Taxi drivers themselves are incredibly vulnerable, probably more so than riders in terms of incidents. This is a bylaw that generally is unenforced, except for the issuance of the license, and so it comes back to the question of have a bylaw just for the sake of having a bylaw, or do we have a bylaw that we actually enforce? And that would require additional resources and police resources. I'm certainly comfortable with having heard from Deputy in Chief that they do not have any safety concerns. The fact that we do have a rideshare that is not covered, and those rideshires are happening, and I think that flows well into the last point, and the rideshare is creating competition, which is improving services. And often taxi bylaws in other jurisdictions that we found were not in place to protect necessarily vulnerable riders, but they were in place to protect taxi companies from facing other competition from other taxi companies. So sometimes by improving competition, you get better results. And I guess the last one, I'd just sort of say, in terms of the criminal record checks and vulnerable sector checks, I'd struggle to find why a taxi company is different than a hotel, or than a sports team, or than anything else that we could try and pass a bylaw in order to, to require criminal record checks. Anyway, it is a sort of an anomaly, so probably that's why I came to council. So off it will go to council for a vote in a couple of weeks. Counselor Trenton has tabled that information and open, obviously, for comments from members of the public until then, and then we can move on. All right, thank you, Director Gunn. Moving in, I'll call on the Chair of, Vice Chair of Finance Committee, or Chair of Finance Committee is not here today, he's in FCM, he sits on the National Board of FCM. Counselor McCollum, bringing forward a recommendation from the Finance Committee with respect to multi-year funding for Harborfront Theater and College of Piping. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Your Worship. I believe everybody received the information package, and I'll, I'll just read that a little bit. So what the committee is asking all of us to consider is the multi-year funding agreement between the city and College of Piping and Harborfront Theater, two longstanding organizations in the community. It was submitted by Counselor Bruce McDougall, and at the council approval, asking for council approval to enter into a five-year funding agreement effective April 1st, 2025, with the College of Piping and Harborfront Theater, for a total of $900,000 over the five consecutive years. This would be at $90,000 being issued to each of the two organizations on an annual basis. The funding level for the last number of fiscal years has been $87,000 for each, and the additional background on the, a request, a recommendation, is that the Finance Committee is recommending it be a multi-year funding agreement, be approved by council, and the agreement presented in the copy was reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting held on in the copy was reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting held on November twenty-first. Both of these nonprofit organizations will be required to apply for the annual community support program, but there are annual reporting requirements to monitor the use of this funding. And the final important point is that the annual operating grant provides significant funding to the College of Piping and Harborfront Theater. Entering into a five-year agreement provides stability for these two nonprofit organizations who depend on funding from the different level of governments to sustain operations. The multi-year agreement also encourages the College of Piping and Harborfront Theater to work collaboratively together and to outline in their annual reporting the work completed in collaboration and future opportunities being developed. Um, the other point that I think i- is worthy of noting is that the city of Somerside were really, you know, working towards economic development. These two mainstay organizations are here, they draw in a lot of different, uh, groups and entertainment, and to have that stability, to know that without having to apply every year, they know that for a five-year sustainable amount, they know what they have to work with, and if they can attract other funds, it's really important, but this is a stable, uh, portion where they know what they can work with for, for programs. And, um, I just took a look at the agreement, the agreement is very, as you have in your package, the funding agreement is actually very well laid out, there's a lot of good information, but I think the, a lot of the takeaways for us as a mayor and council is that the accountability is built into the agreement, the annual final report is very important, that they have to give something back to the city, that we have a record of that information, and another thing that I think is important is that there is a hold on that last installment, um, that held, ten percent held back until the annual final report is given, so that accountability is there. So if anyone in the public that is listening to this this evening, or hears about it, um, they certainly, uh, can have their comments, or have a say in, in what the city is proposing in this agreement, and they can direct their, uh, comments to our, uh, CAO Gordon McFarlane at nine oh two four three two twelve forty-six if they have anything that they would like to contribute, and this will be coming back to our monthly council meeting at a time for us to vote in December. Okay, that concludes.
Thank you, Counsel. I'll now put it to the floor. I will just add two quick, uh, additional facts there. The Finance Committee did meet with both of the organizations, um, altogether, um, and both organizations have taken it to their boards of directors, um, who, um, have both, uh, well, you can confirm it, Kristin?
I've heard from the Harborfront Theater, and the board was happy. Their meeting is this Friday.
Okay, so, okay, just thought I'd add that, uh, facts there. Counselor Adams?
Um, I'm just curious as to why they're both in the same agreement. Why wouldn't they be two separate agreements?
Like you could, at the same amounts, but could apply just ninety and ninety, but why are they both saying in the same agreement?
We're looking at these two organizations to work collaboratively together, and we felt that having it in one agreement would encourage that in, in their reporting requirements.
And, I don't know, just me personally, I think that they should be separate, because they're not the same boards or anything, so I would, I would prefer to see them in two separate multi-year community support funding agreement. It would be like asking figure skating and hockey to be in the same agreement, or, like, I, I don't think that's the same, I think they're, they're different, so I think they should be on separate ones, so.
So, I was going somewhere else originally, but to Carrie's point, in the agreement, is there, because I like the idea of them working together, they're, although they're two different, uh, organizations with two separate boards, their mandates would be very similar in, in what they're doing for the city. So is there any, in the multi-year agreement, is there any language that sort of ties them to working together? I don't know who the question's for, so I'll just talk out loud, but whoever can answer that?
I mean, we ask them to con- they're already starting to work collaboratively together, and we ask in the annual report if they would detail what they have worked on together, and any future developments. So through the final annual reporting, we are asking for them to report on that.
If, if they, if they have, but there's, there's nothing saying that they have to, it's just sort of, we're encouraging.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, okay, and the next, yeah, so i- if there's something in there tying them, then I think it makes sense, or if there's a way that we can hopefully not make them, but, I, I like the idea of them working together, but I just don't know if they don't, then what's the sense of having them in the same agreement? Um, the other thing I'm curious, because I, I think this is long overdue, I think we've talked about this, many years of having our, uh, core groups sign multi-year deals, as we know, we're not going to, it's hard to cut, uh, funding for certain organizations. I'm curious as to where we are with any of the other, uh, key organizations that we've funded, um, historically, the same year over year, Boys and Girls Club, Gen X, Minor Hockey, the three that really come to mind. Um, has there been any discussions with those, and I guess, did, did this agreement come because the, where, where's the, why did, why did we look at these two to start, and not whoever? I'm just curious where this came from.
These two, we provide significant operating grant to these two organizations, so we started with them. Um, we will be looking at the Boys and Girls Club and Generation XX next.
Okay.
Um, not sure if it'll be before the budget is passed, but they are.
Is there any reason, if we have the template in front of us, I will speak as a former, uh, president of the Boys and Girls Club, and something we would have loved to have, um, is the ability to know that you're receiving funding year after year, you sort of think you're going to, but, um, these long-term funding agreements are great for board of directors and, and, and the organization, so, um, I cannot imagine that we would come into budget and somebody saying we have to cut Generation XX or funding, so I, I just don't know why we don't take this opportunity, maybe get it done before the budget with it coming forward. I, I think as counsel, if we're gonna support, um, this funding agreement, we would have a hard time not supporting the others the same way. I just, we might as well get it done in the meantime and get it over with.
I'll put that on the next Finance Committee agenda, and we'll arrange to meet with those two organizations as well.
Well, I do, but if you want, I can wait. Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, I think all of the points are really important that everybody is making. I think on this one, if we can just kind of reflect on it a bit, I'm, and I'm just going into our own, our own situation as a municipality. We work with Explore Somerside, Downtown Somerside, Community Services, a lot of times we're trying to multi-package programs, events, entertainment. These are, as I've mentioned earlier, they're mainstay organizations that really generate a lot of tourism, bus tours, people coming into the community, and I think one of the advantages of working together, that I know different people, I, I've certainly observed with some of them working together, and I know Director Laurie is here tonight with Wyatt Heritage Properties, by that working together, there's a real synergy that happens, and instead of booking on the same date, I'll give you an example, Celtic Thunder was wonderful, but there were a number of things going on, so by working together, we get a better bang for our dollar in a sense, because we can work around certain seasonal times of the year, and that's really helpful. But they can't do it unless they, they have the money to work with to, to maybe make some of those plans a little bit further, when they know that they will have that money to attract, plus they can piggyback on one another as an organization in their reporting, but also in what they're bringing. So that's, to me, I'm not against what you folks are saying, but there is some advantage of saving money and, uh, planning your marketing plan and your timing for events, that would be really helpful by them working together collaboratively. Okay, that's it.
I like the idea, I think it's good, it doesn't have to come back year after year, oh, great, um, but my worry is maybe around the metrics of terminating the funding, if something weren't going wrong, it just seems like, uh, under like number three, where it's responsibilities of the recipients, it just seems like very loose metrics that is kind of open to interpretation, and that does not sit well with me, I don't love gray areas, um, so things like, you know, says the Harborfront Theater shall encourage, that's not really a measurable metric, that's just saying like, they should try to, I would just like to see the wording around that to be just a little bit firmer, so that if there happens to be an issue, which I highly doubt there would be, we can say, you didn't meet this, and there'd be really no argument with it, it's very black and white, here it is, and we're done. Uh, so if we maybe look at the wording for the possibility of getting out of the funding, if we needed to, um, that would be, that would sit much better with me.
Could there be some kind of in the wording, just as a consideration, some kind of an exiting clause in that agreement, that if for some reason, the, I don't know how, how it would, you know, be worded, but if there were some, something in the agreement that was not met, that there would be some way to, to look at that, to, to remediate it?
There is a termination clause, right, there is a, there's a sixty-day termination clause with written notice for, uh, any of the recipients or the, um, or the funder, so.
Yeah.
Counsel retains that. Uh, I think one of the purposes of having the language is kind of reflects what the regular, the annual language is for the annual grants, um, and the endeavor to increase enrollment, can't require the college to increase enrollment, I think it's to try to keep within the spirit of the organization, but that language could be looked at, certainly. I've sat in on the Finance Committee meetings, and then also just to the point on Counselor Snow, uh, why starting here? Because you gotta start somewhere. Um, that's it. Uh, these two organizations, um, have, over the years, uh, been seen as somewhat competitive in nature and, and not, um, working always collaboratively together, but, um, the current executive directors are working well, and we thought this is a good opportunity to, Counselor McCollman's point, to bring them together, to have shared success, um, overall, and, and ideally be able to show a success of a collaborative agreement between three parties and be able to carry that, um, example, uh, potentially to others. And then to Counselor, uh, Adams' point, um, the reason by bringing it together was just that, which is so that there isn't a separation, so we don't have one then thinking that, you know, if, if there was just the Harborfront Theater had signed one, and just the college had signed the other, they would not need to share what the contents are of each of those, um, and the long-term goal here was to try and create some more, uh, collaborative, uh, working relationships amongst different groups of the city. Um, yeah, those are just, again, comments that came up at the Finance Committee, or responses or discussions. Counselor Trenum?
Sure, um, just a couple of points. Um, stability, it's great, I mean, I've been, in nineteen ninety-one, I was at the College of Piping, nailing the amphitheater together, it hurt my thumb a lot, so that was, yeah, and I think all of my children have gone there, and, uh, a lot of respect. And Harborfront, I was just there last night, so calling a jubilee, crying out loud, but, you know, uh, can't, can't, can't change that. I'm just curious though, in terms of, we have both of them together, and I don't foresee anything changing or needing to terminate it at all, but if something happened, can we, if, I don't know, a natural, I don't know what could happen, but is, does this agreement give weight that we could, or they could terminate themselves, or we could just one, as opposed to both? I'm not seeing that.
Number seven.
Number seven, either one? But again, I see recipients, right, so that if both are entering the agreement, if one, if one doesn't meet the standards, then do we have to ex the agreement, I guess, that's...
The funder could terminate the agreement on sixty days' notice, and then re-sign separate agreements if there was a situation where one of the organizations was no longer meeting any of the broad objectives that it set out, it would then have secondary issues probably with their membership.
Not that I could ever imagine it happening, but, okay.
All right, um, so we'll take that to next council meeting, and, uh, we go. Um, we'll now move to item six, committee of the whole discussion items. Uh, we have, our first item up here is a presentation from Anna Keenan, Sustainable Transportation Officer, uh, with the city of Charlatown, regarding Island-Wide Transit Coordination Presentation and Discussion. Um, CAO is going to join Anna, Anna, welcome, uh, to Somerside City Hall, Council Chambers. Um, and Gordon, I don't know if you want to give a, a quick little intro there, some of this has been, uh, an evolving discussion, um, with the city, the city, last council initiated a transit study that was, um, then revised in April, I think, of twenty twenty-three, um, as this, we continue to explore transit options here in the city of Somerside. Um, transit has come up, uh, originally was raised with the Urban Mayor's Meeting between Cornwall, Stratford, uh, Somerside and Charlatown, um, and there was a, a joint interest in making sure that as, uh, transit developed island-wide, that, uh, transit systems, and if Somerside were to explore growing a transit system, that the transit systems would integrate across the province, because, um, if you're gonna come from North Rustico to Somerside to Cornwall, we want to make sure that, uh, the systems work and fit together. And, uh, Anna has been leading, uh, the charge on a lot of this, and has, I've, I've been a recipient of one of your presentations, so I'm looking forward to the next one, but I will hand it over to you and Gordon.
Your Worship, I think you handled most of the introduction, that's good. I, I don't, um, that was basically the summary, um, that I wanted to give. We've, city staff, um, have been attending some meetings and working with, um, Anna and her group, um, in the city of Charlatown. Anna certainly knows more about transit, um, uh, she would be the, the resident expert in the room, for sure. Um, I think she'll explain to our council some of the work that, um, the committee, that her group and, which includes Somerside, Charlatown, Cornwall, Stratford, um, have done, um, and then, um, there'll be an ask, I guess, at our next council meeting, that this council endorses, um, kind of the path forward, which is still very high level, but it's, it's basically to engage with the province, to start having discussions with them around an Island-Wide Transit Commission, so, um, that's our hope for this evening, and, uh, I'll let Anna take it away from there.
Very good. Thank you very much, Your Worship and Counselors, and, uh, CAO, very, it's a real pleasure to be here in Somerside. I'm a regular visitor to your fine town, I live out in New Glasgow, and I'm here all the time for kids' sports, and visiting credit union plays, Somerside Market, all of that, and I would love to be able to catch the bus. I do exactly that trip from North Rustico to Somerside to Cornwall, uh, quite often, so, um, yeah, I currently work for the city of Charlatown, of course, and just wanted to follow up on, after the discussions at the Urban Mayor's Meetings, um, we had some staff workshops amongst our four municipalities, the four major urban municipalities, um, and at the staff level, we looked at a number of case studies, um, that we'd received some advice on from a consultant, and it gave us, um, a bit of analysis and clear direction, saying that if we look at the way that, um, transit coordination is done across multiple municipalities and different jurisdictions in Canada, and also in the US, um, that this is something that we would like to pursue, um, with the province in PEI, um, but exactly how that looks, we, we pulled out strengths and weaknesses from a set of case studies. So, um, I'll just, uh, touch on, um, I suppose the current state of transit across the whole island, um, very briefly, and then I'll touch on the case studies and the six principles that we pulled out, that I think that our municipalities can learn from. Um, so, we've had public transportation on Prince Edward Island, we're a bit of a late starter, but it's coming up on the twenty-year anniversary, um, next September, I believe, um, and that was led by the capital area municipalities, Charlatown, Cornwall, and Stratford. Um, of all of the spending on public transportation on PEI, about ninety percent of it occurs in the capital area for our urban transit system, and the remaining ten percent is largely the relatively recent introduction of the new rural transit routes. Of course, they cover many more kilometers, because the bussies are, are traveling a hundred kilometers an hour, um, but they have fewer service hours on the road, and generally lower frequency than what we have in the urban area. Um, but that being said, the rural routes that connect our cities and help people to get to and from work are largely where the largest carbon emission savings can come in, and also financial savings for people who are opting. for people who are opting not to drive a car. It's, it's a really marked saving when you consider that a round trip, like I was talking about, from, you know, New Glasgow or Rustico to Summerside and back would be about $15 in fuel, and that can really add up over time. So, to date, there's been very little coordination between the urban and the provincial transit systems, although they are both operated by the same private operator who's contracted by the municipalities or the province to operate the system. And so, we're seeing a lot of opportunities for operational efficiencies and cost savings, but also a better user experience and improved governance, so that we have increased transparency and accountability within the system. Overall, the province has been extremely supportive of the capital area transit system. We probably could not have achieved what we've achieved in the capital area without their support. Since 2012, there's been an annual operating grant of $180,000, and for the last two years, there's been an additional sort of post-COVID subsidy of $475,000 per annum. But we don't have a commitment that that will go forward on an indefinite basis, but that does up, add up to $655,000 a year that the province invests directly in operating budget to the municipalities. In addition, the Tooney Transit Program subsidizes the fares, and under our contractual agreement with the operator, our operator retains the fares, which is quite a unique situation when you look across, you know, the 400 transit systems in Canada. It's, it's one of only two that uses that model, and we're looking at, you know, shifting our contractual arrangements so that it's more typical in future years. But the fare subsidies, and in addition, the purchase of tickets directly for provincial social services clients amounts to about $1.2 million per year. So, between ticket subsidies and purchases and that direct municipal subsidy, it's about $1.8 million per year of provincial money, and about $3.5 million per year invested from the municipalities. So, in total, those, the public funding to the transit system accounts for about 75% of the cost of transit, with the remainder coming from riders' fares and advertising. That's fairly typical for a public transit system. You don't operate a public transit system to make money for your municipality. You introduce it to provide a social service, address climate action, and also to reduce parking pressure and congestion, and to help people get to work, alleviating the expense of private transit on household finances, which then becomes money that they can reinvest in the local economy rather than paying in fuel every month. Capital purchases for transit currently for our urban system are largely, they have largely been financed through a combination of federal and provincial grants, with, you know, top-up municipal funding. But the funding landscape is changing. The recently announced Canada Public Transit Fund, we had a preliminary assessment, and it would lower the federal portion of the contribution from what was in the previous program. Previously, the federal government contributed 40% of the purchase price of a bus, for example. But under the new program, because we're a small municipality, a small system with low ridership, we're actually being disadvantaged relative to our sort of proportion of the Canadian population. And so, it looks like it might only be 12% federal funding out of our planned capital investment unless we really scale back our planned levels of growth, which is not something that we want to do, because currently Prince Edward Island has amongst the lowest public transit use in, you know, comparable systems. We have about 40% lower service hours provided even in the capital area than cities of a comparable size. So, we're below the Canadian average. And if you look at the census data on how people travel on Prince Edward Island, we are the most car-dependent province in Canada, with 92% of all commuting trips being taken by personal vehicle. And that also means that people who cannot drive for one reason or another, whether that's age, being too young or too old, or disability, or having lost your license for one reason or another, or simply who choose not to, they don't have a lot of options to participate in the economy and in the community without having, you know, a very, very reliable service that goes beyond 6 o'clock at night and runs frequently enough that you can rely on it. From a transit rider perspective, there are different user experiences between our municipal system and the islandwide system. You're probably aware that to get on the islandwide system, you have to pre-book your rides, which is more of a sort of personal coach service than a true, you know, fixed route transit service where the bus just shows up and you can get on it. And that is a barrier to participation that would drive down ridership. I think the ideal would be, I think everybody in the transit sector would agree, we do want to get to the point where there are enough buses running regularly that people don't have to pre-book their rides. And there's also different, different ticketing, but because we have the same private operator, there are a couple of conventions that are currently practiced, which were never sort of formal agreements, but a monthly pass that is purchased for one transit system, they just allow it to be used on the other, and that should be a formal arrangement so that you can purchase a ticket in Suri and say, I want a day pass to go anywhere on the island, and that'll get you to Charlottetown, through the Charlottetown system, to Summerside if you want it, to Tignesh. And you should be able to access all of the information in the same place. And ideally, we would move on from paper-based ticketing, where people have to make another trip to City Hall to buy a card every month, and we would just have the latest standard in, in technology around the world. And we got to see this in Toronto a couple of weeks ago. Myself and Jessica attended a conference there, but cities are moving even away from the sort of tap cards that you might have seen in Montreal or Toronto for the last few decades, to just being able to tap your credit card. So, you don't even have to purchase a, you know, an independent card. You can just tap your credit card on the bus, and it'll get you straight on. And so, introducing a, a system like that, it would be ideal to introduce that across the whole island at once, rather than for the city to introduce it, and then the province to introduce it, then us have to harmonize it later. So, there, there's operational and administrative savings that we can achieve by, by working together, and we're a very small province, we should be able to, to achieve that level of collaboration. So, there's a couple of the advantages. With the capital purchases, I think we do have some duplication of effort, and we have these inconsistent funding formulas that we would like to, to organize going forward and have, have long-term predictable funding for municipal transit. And we want to be able to coordinate schedules, which are currently very disconnected from each other. So, when staff did our internal investigation, we looked at case studies from British Columbia, who has, obviously, they're much larger than PEI, but they do have an entire province-wide transit system into which municipalities can sort of plug in, and they can make decisions within their area of authority, but it's all part of one BC transit system. They have a very clear funding formula and province-wide capital procurement, which means that there's no duplication of procurement efforts across small municipalities, and they have a standard type of fleet with one supplier. So, it's the same type of buses, the same fare system in every bus. We also looked at Greater Vancouver, which is 14, I think, different municipalities in one area, the Greater Toronto and Hamilton area, also consisting in multiple municipalities, although obviously much larger population and very urban compared to PEI, even if they're geographically smaller. And then more comparable to PEI, we looked at Delaware and Connecticut, USA, which are similar geography and comparable populations. So, from those case studies, staff, you know, read through, looked at the strengths and weaknesses in each, and we pulled out six principles, which we would propose are the municipal goals with which we could approach the province, to say, we'd like to consider a province-wide transit governance framework if it achieves these six goals. And they are, number one, streamlining transit administration and governance. Second, identifying a clear, long-term funding formula for municipal transit operational costs. Third is retaining full municipal decision-making over routes and service hours that are within a municipality's boundaries. Fourth is increasing efficiency in capital procurement for fleet, for bus stop designs, for depots, for fare systems. Fifth is giving transit riders that consistent experience province-wide for passes, fares, information access, visual identity and branding, bus stop infrastructure. And finally, is ensuring transparency, accountability, and value for money. Now, I think is a great time for us to be approaching the province with these ideas and trying to create and design something that's going to really set up a legacy for decades to come on PEI, as they're working on their province-wide 10-year public transit strategy, which echoes the work that we've recently done in the capital area with our, our 10-year plan. And, yeah, they have recently hired a net-zero transportation officer in the net-zero office within Department of Energy, Environment, and Climate Action. And so, I think that, that signals that the province is continuing to invest in and expand public transit, and would welcome our input as municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. I'll open the floor to members of council for questions. Counselor Adam?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Anna. I just had a quick question on, you had mentioned, and I wasn't sure, did you say you would be looking at getting rid of the passes and just doing tap with their cards, or would you have, would you want to have both?
That's an excellent question. We, you can have passes and a card system, and most systems now are moving towards what's called fare capping. So, you know, if you tap once to take one trip, it's charged at, you know, a per-trip rate, but every week there would be a maximum. So, let's say you, you do eight taps in a week, then the remainder of your trips for the week would be free, and same for within a month or within a year. So, it's, one of the challenges with ticket-based systems is, is people sort of have to guess in advance, will I use transit enough this month to make buying a monthly pass worth it? But with fare capping, you don't have to do that mental calculation. You can just tap, but there does have to be options, like a paper pass for people who don't have a credit card or a debit card.
Yeah, I was saying, and just so many people would be, seniors and young people using, it would be on a tighter budget, so they'd, you know, using your card often might sort of, you know, they'd probably like to know that they have so much, but the capping part would definitely make more sense. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Ron, Counselor Cameron? Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Anna. Transit is something that we've sort of been visiting and revisiting and trying to keep fresh in our minds here for a few years now. We've had a transit feasibility study done and updated once or twice along the way as well, and I'm just wondering, and it's actually included in the package, I think it's 46 pages or 42 pages or so, where they, where they suggested routes and different models. And so, and then obviously, there's a cost associated with that that we had our consultants do. So, I'm just wondering, is any, and I think I know, I know the answer, is any of that data that has come into us still sort of usable, even if we choose to sort of collaborate into a new system? Like, is it still valid on a city level in terms of routes and everything?
Yeah. If you, if you're a part of a province-wide transit system, then you would absolutely still need to be doing the same type of analysis, where your population density is, where your origin and destination demand, and then that would feed into route planning. But what would become much more simplified for municipalities in future is knowing how you're going to fund that without needing to negotiate an individual agreement just for your municipality. There might be a formula for urban municipalities, there might be a formula for the micro municipalities that have a different system. I used to work for Victoria by the Sea, for example. They probably need a golf cart that just goes around the village, you know? But I think the funding formula would be clear. What BC Transit does is their province-wide transit agency has route planning expert staff within it, so that instead of each municipality needing to hire an outside consultant, which is largely currently off-island expertise, although there's, there's one consultant who, there's one employee of a consultancy who does live here on PEI, and it'd be great to have him working in the, in a future provincial commission. But when route planning needs to be done for within a municipal area in BC Transit, those province-wide staff just come in and help that municipality without there being, you know, the need for an RFP to find that independent service. It's just part of the services that are provided, and there's sort of a standard format for it. So, I think it would simplify the administration as well, but probably get to the same sort of results as the advice just provided.
And one of the, one of the six principles that Anna noted, and, you know, I think all, Charlottetown, Cornwall, Stratford, and Summerside, we're all of a similar mind on this, like, I think we all want to retain local decision-making, and ideally, I mean, Summerside still, we're still in our infancy on public transportation. Ideally, I think we, the royal we, believe that a provincial model where individual municipalities could sort of plug and play depending on how much we were willing to spend, right? So, there'd be a, if we want more transit, there would be a system and a, a structure in place where council could, we want more, we could buy more and have more, but it would be in an integrated system that was more efficient overall for island residents and Summerside residents.
And I should add, in British Columbia, some municipalities decide that they want to take on the responsibility of being their local transit authority, and so they take on that expertise in-house, and they do their own planning if they're large enough. That might only exist in PEI in the capital area. I think even Summerside would probably be too small for that. But then municipalities that choose not to do it, they can take advantage of that province-wide expertise that's there on an as-needed basis.
Counselor Cameron? Thank you. Anna, that's a great presentation. It makes me very excited about public transit, which, I've lived in places before where that's, that was what I had to rely on was public transit, and talking about the question that Counselor Adam, Adam's brought up was, you know, tapping and getting to a maximum. I, I lived in London for a year, and that was like a saving grace for me, is knowing that I could get around everywhere and be capped at a certain point and not have to then go, oh, if I, if I buy this pass for the month, am I gonna, you know, is that enough money, or is it going to be too much? So, I, I love that you brought that up. I am wondering, as, like, currently, within Charlottetown or within the province, what is, what accessibility is like for people with mobility issues traveling on the transit system?
That's a wonderful question. I really appreciate it. A lot of our riders are disabled. If you go out on the, on the buses every day, you will find people who are mobility-challenged to the point where they can't drive themselves in a car, and they like the independence of being able to take the bus rather than having to rely on the generosity of friends and family. All of our buses are equipped with ramps, so they're fold-out or slide-out ramps. The fold-out ones are much better operationally, and they have a kneeling bus function so that, you know, be secured, and the drivers are all trained in, in supporting that. There's also a number of blind users. I will add to that, that there is also the Pat and the Elephant, of course, an independent nonprofit that does phenomenal and amazing work. In other municipalities, Paratransit is fully integrated with a, and I'm a wheelchair user, and then it'll plan the trip for them to say, okay, well, the Pat and the Elephant equivalent service, rather than the public transit service, the organization on spreadsheets, which is one of the challenges that Pat and the Elephant does have right now. And I'll add to that, that one of the, so this is where, you know, you might have a minibus that can see, and then the computers will optimize the routes and will spit out a route for the driver, saying, please go and pick up these 16 people, and, you know, you're going to pick up, is in some contexts in less dense areas, usually on the periphery of a province-wide system. Both Nova Scotia and New Brunswick have put out province-wide requests for proposals, and I know from that even just for the capital system, if the, if the provincial question doesn't get off the ground quickly.
Working on, myself and Counselor Ron said on the committee chair of the committee together, so your mention of some stable funding and being three municipalities closely knit together that then can probably anywhere as close per capita as Charlottetown is getting from the numbers, obviously. We, as a municipality, can actually see it through, unfortunately. We need to have that, to continue this conversation, because it's, it's something that really would be a huge benefit to our municipalities, have it consistent.
It was a great presentation. You did a good job. Lots of good information. One of the municipality can apply for, or is there something about ridership or not closed for that particular round? We were hoping for funding, you know, approaching sort of $800,000 or $1 million per year for our capital program, but we, actually, no, more, sorry, more like 1.2 or 1.3 million, but we received word back that the amount of funding that we got, according to their funding formula, is only going to be $285,000 a year, which is significantly less than we were hoping for.
hoping for. And as a small-population municipality with very small existing transit ridership, Summerside would also receive a much smaller amount even than that. So, and that's just for capital acquisitions for public transit, it's not for ongoing operations. But that being said, there are other funding streams that would be available that I'd be very happy to, yeah, should be applied for in the coming months, certainly.
And the next point, and I'm not trying to be adversarial here, but our province certainly advocates inclusion, and they advocate for, you know, people having the availability to travel. And I guess, you know, just as Deputy Mayor Snow has pointed out, how we could attract funding similar to some of the other provinces, or some of the other municipalities, because I know Charlottetown being the capital city, that's a given, it's a capital city, but when I think of other municipalities such as Cornwall, Stratford, Summerside being the second-largest municipality, and then your point about Prince Edward Island is the most car-dependent province, I mean, that raises some alarm bells that possibly if there was better inclusion for money and funding, and we have an interest as a council in doing it, it would certainly be great if we could tap into that to increase our ridership, to increase the schedules, and to find a way that would be very unique for this area on ridership that people could use. And I don't know, where would we go for that? Would that be a provincial meeting? Would that be something that could be done collaboratively?
I think these are great questions, and this is one of the reasons that I think a provincial approach would be necessary. Even though I work for Charlottetown, you know, I'm a resident of the whole island and love all of the places on the island, and I too would like to see equitable and predictable funding on a sort of per capita basis, and also considering population densities and all of that. So I think the work that we do, I have to acknowledge that I'm, 0.6 of my time is spent on public transit and 0.4 is on active transportation and bikes, and it's the first time that even the capital area has had a staff member dedicated to public transit for just that amount. And so, you know, having all of these, I don't think that any city should need to go lobbying to, or any town should need to go lobbying to the province for a special grant just for them. I think we should, the work that we do in the capital area to encourage a province-wide funding formula will benefit Summerside and hopefully Tignesh, Montague, Georgetown, Surrey, down to, you know, smaller places like Victoria by the Sea or Miss Gush as well. So, yeah, I think achieving that sort of consistent funding formula, it's based on objective measures rather than based on subjective relationships or who lobbies the hardest would be where we want to get to.
And my last point on it would be, if we attend, I'll use as an example, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and all of the, nationally, all of the provinces are there, often we're referred to as a rural municipality when we come into contact with other larger municipalities. But also in some conferences, Prince Edward Island has been seen as a very strong pilot case where we can make things work because of our smallness. And I think that that is something that our province is missing on when it comes to, say, ridership and public transportation, simply because it opens up a whole wide variety for people from the tip of Tignesh to eastern Prince Edward Island, but because of ridership and because we don't have uniformity in having that availability, because we don't have the funding, I think that that is something that our province really needs to look at, because we're losing out. And many people, whether they're students or seniors, as Counselor Carey has indicated, or they just don't have a vehicle or limited in any way accessibility, I think that type of a ridership availability would open up Prince Edward Island to everyone so that we could travel from tip to tip. Be great for tourists. So I think they're missing it on some things. Thanks.
Counselor Trenum and then Daron?
Sure. I guess I don't have questions. I just want to celebrate. That's a great presentation. I loved it. I also love your point four, like to hear about that, but not right now. But the point six, great. Thank you much for being here. What this really spells and sounds great for me is, we're looking at, I guess, a framework that we're looking to develop that talks about funding, bringing funding together and bringing experience together. Like, the people who know the business and the people who know how to get money to support the business. This is really, really exciting. And for anybody listening in the public, I can tell you right now, $10 a month gets you on transit from Summerside to Charlottetown. That is just insane. Isn't that not just crazy? And I'm recently elected, so going door-to-door, I gave the wonderful information to an individual about transit, because they have meetings in Charlottetown and frequent meetings in Charlottetown, and they were taking alternative measures to get there, which was costing over $200 a route, right? So it's a lot cheaper, $2 every time, or 10 for a month. So I appreciate that, and I think drawing reference to the fact that I think, Anna, you said 92% of PEI travel by personal vehicle. And so I think we are, we can make a great case study, and if we're able to go province-wide and just taking that down and seeing what transit can do, and again, for those people who really desperately need it as well, there is no choice for some people, that that's their only mode of transportation, so if we can support that in any way, and love the principles, I'm him scratching them, I'm pretty sure I got them all down, but I love that. So, yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
Counselor Daron?
Thank you, Yourship. I just wanted to add, I think, in addition to this being an informative presentation, I think it also may have given us the opportunity to sort of poke the logs in the fire that we kind of already have burning. The transit feasibility study that we had updated in April of last year, which is included in our package tonight, it does list a bunch of funding streams at the end of it. There's one in particular, and Dylan Consulting actually sort of did the legwork in identifying these for us. There is a number of them, and just one in particular in response just to Counselor McCollman's talking about how we're considered rural, there is a Rural Transit Solutions Fund. I don't know if it's still available at this time, but they did indicate that we are eligible for all of the capital costs that are sort of listed in the table at the end of this particular part in the report. So they indicate that we'd be eligible for an electric bus, charging stations for the bus, shelters, accessibility features and signage to the tune of about $1.7 million. So I'm sort of revisiting this too. We've seen it before, but like I mentioned, this presentation sort of rejuvenates that desire to look into it further. So I guess my question to, I don't know, maybe CAO or Kristin, like, is this something that we can apply for? And if it is, like, do we have, are we ready to do that? Or, you know what I mean? Because it's always been sort of a budgetary burden, not burden, but obstacle. And just, again, rereading some of these things in the report, like, a lot of the work is done for us, and I'm just sort of curious as to why we didn't push for it as soon as this report came out. It was around budget time, so maybe we sort of just missed the deadline, but, you know, how quickly, if there's a desire to explore again or further, to really sort of jump in on some of this funding that might not be available forever?
I think the short answer is, there are a lot of considerations with a public transit system other than just the capital cost, right? And our ability to maintain the operating costs of a kind of Summerside-only public transit system, we haven't figured out that financing yet. I think the goal at this point is to work with Anna and the, I guess, the consortium of, that wants to speak with the province about a provincial-wide system that those funding sources would still be available, but where Summerside, as we are in our infancy, can we get in on the ground floor on a more efficient and better governed provincial system versus going off in our own direction at this point in time, where we were starting to see likely a decision point or a junction in how transit's going to be operated in Prince Edward Island in the future, so.
Do we have any indication from current or ongoing discussions with the province on that decision point? Like, when, to Counselor Daron's point, if this funding's available now, similar to, what's the harm in us applying for funding and receiving, yeah, you have the funding there if you were to proceed, as opposed to, like, is there any indication from the province, so province, three months' time says, yeah, we're looking to make some huge announcements, election, whatever, you know how politics work, and then we're left not being able to because we're missing that capital side of things? So I'm just wondering if there's, it's like chicken or egg, do we apply and say, you know, there is funding there, you do get approved, and we try to go to the province, figure it out if this hasn't been decided yet in island-wide? Or do we wait and then not be able to get the funding and have to fund it another way? So I'm just curious as to if there's any indication on decisions from the province? Or is this really in its infancy too, and we're no?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we are in our infancy, but it's not as simple as just applying to a fund and seeing if we can get money for capital transit infrastructure, right? Like, there's a whole system that would need to be built out. So that's number one. Number two, staff time is at a premium. We are applying for money and trying to, like, if you look around the city over the last 18 months, we have had tremendous growth, tremendous pressure on all levels of staff time. So it's not, I don't think we're in a position where we're able to, we'll apply for this money and see what happens, and if we get it, we'll see what we might be able to do with it. That's just not our reality right now. Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor McCollman.
Just as you say that, CAO Gordon, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but just as you do say that, I think of what Anna has pointed out, that you're 0.06, do this, and 0.04 in your position. I wonder even if the city could even go like 0.05 position to look at somebody to really become involved into this, to really track down the things that we would need to do to really build a good plan for funding, for infrastructure, to, as you say, build it out. Even that would be an investment. And also, I look on page 27 of the Dylan Report, it does say, and this may have changed, but regardless of the model used, most transit systems in Canada receive funding from several levels of government. Within Prince Edward Island, the Charlottetown Transit System receives 180,000 per annum from the provincial government. This equates to a subsidy of approximately 367 per capita based on Charlottetown Transit Systems. If the same subsidy were offered to the city of Summerside on a per capita basis, it would equate to about 54,474 annually. Costings that form part of this study have assumed an annual subsidy of 50,000 from the province of Prince Edward Island. Well, that would go a long way into a 0.04 position to help us really access funding to see. And I'm just putting that out to my fellow counselors and mayor for us to even think about that.
I'll just add a point here. I think I'm so enthused to hear so many counselors talking about the need to invest in staffing for transit, so do consider that when it comes to your operational budget next year. We've recently done a little bit of the math and the scenarios, and like, when you receive an electric bus, electric buses are about twice as expensive upfront as a diesel bus. And so we've done the math on, you know, it only makes financial sense, I think it always makes climate sense in the long term, but it only makes financial sense for a city if you are planning to operate that bus for 16 years at quite a high, you know, number of hours per day. It doesn't make sense to have a bus that you only operate for five hours a day. And so, you know, Gordon does have a point that we do need to be planning and matching our capital purchases to our operational plans. And then we also need to consider, how would you, who would operate the bus? Would you do it in-house, or would you contract a private operator? And if you contract a private operator, what rate do you pay them and what fares do you set? And it's very difficult when you're starting out a transit system to know what your, to know with any certainty what your ridership will be. And often for the first few years, ridership will be very low because people are just getting used to the idea that there is a system they can use. And so it does take a while. There is a bit of a leap of faith to invest money upfront in starting a system, but I am confident that there is demand based on the fact of our very low transit ridership. And when you compare it to not only the rest of Canada and North America, but also the world, like, where we could be getting to in terms of transit ridership if we did expand. But it is difficult work to organize and manage all of that introduction. And so I suppose the question to council today, if I may, is, you know, does this council give direction to your staff to advance this conversation with the province? We've done this preliminary research, and I suppose at the municipal level, I don't want to be going and talking with the province without knowing that there's strong support from the municipalities that we're serving. Yes.
Yeah, great. And with that, we should probably start moving along with our agenda. There are a couple last quick questions or points? But we're already at 6:30.
The electric buses that are in the transit system now, who's the manufacturer of those?
We've just ordered our first electric buses. We haven't taken delivery of them yet, but Nova Bus is the manufacturer. There are currently about 275 transit Nova Buses on the roads around Canada, and there is Nova Bus and New Flyer are the two major transit manufacturers in Canada. And they have orders for up to 4,000 buses that are in the procurement process and that will be delivered over the next couple of years. The first electric transit buses were introduced in Canada in 2015, so they have been operating well. And I think it's important to note, they are distinct, a different manufacturer than the school buses, which have had a bunch of problems, and that company has had some corporate challenges as well, so. But Nova Bus has been delivering diesel transit buses for decades and decades, and they're actually in the process of shutting down their diesel production. They're not planning on introducing a new diesel bus. Once they've completed the manufacturing on their current line of diesel buses, they'll be transitioning entirely to compressed natural gas, hydrogen, and mainly battery-electric buses.
Counselor Daron?
Yeah, thanks again. I don't mean to drag this on, but I guess just as a final thought, again, looking at the feasibility study that was updated last year, they cover everything. They did the work for us, right down from private model versus public to the routes, one bus versus two versus on-demand, and they even have recommendations of which model to choose, recommended route, recommended service structure, recommended fleet, recommended everything. And then they break down the capital costs and the operating costs, so. Still big decisions and conversations to have, but again, a lot of the work is done. I mean, it's a year old, which in some cases may be old, maybe not, but the work is done. So that's a big step.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor.
There's more work to do, tons more work to do, but.
Some work is there.
Yeah, there's lots.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you for taking the time. Those main goals, and we talk about fitting governance and operations, long-term funding, capital efficiency with multiple purchase partners, and rider experience being consistent across the province. I think that was one of the, all of those goals were the reason why we wanted to put that on the discussion at the Urban Mayor's piece. And really, the driving piece for me had been to make sure Summerside was at the table, and the language that Gordon used is the plug-and-play. Whether we plug into it or whether we plug together, we need to make sure that our transit system can play with the rest of the transit options across the province, and there is funding certainty. And that's been a key for us in terms of understanding what the operational cost would be for one of our, for us as one of the potential partners. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you to all the cities that are, municipalities that are working together. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you to all the cities that are, and municipalities that are working together on this. I think we all at the table recognize that to make a transit system work, even our individual transit systems, we have to work well together. And I'm really happy we're at the table and really encouraged by what I'm hearing from council. So as I understand, the next step would be at our next council meeting, there's a resolution to either continue moving forward as part of this group and engaging with the province and continuing to use what we have from how we look at distributing transit here in, in our community and making it all work together. So we're certainly on the course, and it seems like everything is sort of lined up with the province also engaged with its ten-year transit plan, so. Yeah, excellent. Thank you for the time. Thank you. All right, council, so we move on now. I said, I hope we'll be done by seven. I don't think we're gonna finish in twenty-one minutes. We still got a bunch of things left. Welcome up Director Lorie Ellis, Director of Culture, to present Public Art Policy Draft Review. It's in the package. I think councillors probably had the chance to read it. So Director Ellis, if you can give us a rundown of it, and I think what'll happen here is you sort of present it to council, ask some discussions, have a discussion point, then probably go away with changes and revisions, and then keep moving that process forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about public art. So what I brought forward to you in your package was what a public art policy could look like for the city of Somerside. The five-page policy that you have was drawn from a much larger draft public art program that has been developed in draft stage. If it's good with everyone, I'll just go into detail a little bit about how we got to where we're at with the draft policy. I was of the opinion that in order to create a, a policy, that it would be necessary to kind of consider what a program would look like to support the policy as the policy was being developed, to ensure that we had, like, the preliminary framework and foundational planning necessary to ensure success in the strategic introduction of public art into our city of Somerside's public spaces. The specific objectives in the development stage of this was to come up with a policy and program that would match and adopt the best practices from many other public art programs across the Maritimes, Canada, and North America. But at the same time, include areas of customization that would make our policy and program work for Somerside. So in the development of our policy slash program, we researched the programs and policies of at least twenty other municipalities. This included the cities of Charlottetown, Stratford, Moncton, Halifax, Fredericton, Calgary, Banff, Victoria, Winnipeg, many Ontario cities as well, and looked into, you know, the city of Philadelphia as an example, who were the kind of inventors of the modern public, percent for public art program. And into larger city centers like Toronto and Vancouver. There were another, a, a number of other sources that we used as well that included the Creative City Network of Canada Public Art Toolkit, a piece on moving from diversity to pluralism. It was a project done by Harvard University. And information, articles and stuff on, from McMaster University, Americans for the Arts, Downtown Stratford, Ontario, and Council of Museums. We customized the program, sorry, the policy slash program to make it, make it incorporate like a quick and easy way for community organizations to develop partnerships with the city to bring community-led public art programs to fruition without encountering a whole lot of red tape and curatorial assessments and things like that. The public art policy draft that you have has some objectives that were centered on creating a focused public art agenda, creating more opportunities for expression of diverse cultural voices, the opportunity to engage with public art on a daily basis, to create more opportunities for the city to partner and support, enable and empower citizens and organizations to lead community public art projects, encourage the incorporation of public art into city planning, and promote a civic participation to celebrate and honor our cultural identity, encourage cultural understanding and awareness and community building, and strengthen communications between the city and artists and artist groups. To celebrate cultural identity, encourage cultural understanding and awareness and community building, boost our city's cultural tourism potential, and adopt a funding strategy that would support the program and the policy, sorry, the policy slash program. So in order to do this, there were some dollars put in this year's capital budget, of course, to spend on public art, and in doing so, you know, put together plans for the spending of those dollars and have prepared, in addition to some projects that have already come to fruition, like the, the Iron of History mural project, Create to Get Closer program between the French School in St. Elners and Parkside. We have prepared two calls to go out to the public that are calls to artists, and we've partnered with Downtown Somerside to put together and work together on identifying spots where this public art can go. So I don't know if we want to really get into the particular details of the policy. Maybe you have some basic questions, first of all, that we could, could discuss?
Yeah, that would make sense. We can have some basic questions at the top end, and then I just made a little note here, and maybe the follow-up would be, we could, I was just saying, we could set a sort of single sitting open committee, so have an open committee of council to be able to sit in and do more of a line-by-line review for those councillors who wanted to sit in and attend. So maybe we can start with just open general questions to Director Ellis from members of council.
Not so much a question, but just a comment that I sort of, and again, it'd be something we'd have to get more details on, but I, I kind of like the idea of the one percent for public art strategy that you have in here. It seems like a really efficient way of getting a, a pot going for, for some things. I just kind of, that stood out, because a lot of the time we talked about how we're gonna fund this, how we're gonna fund that, and just just thought it was a good idea. So I just wanted to-
And it's, it's a practice done by a great deal of municipalities, and has, it started in nineteen fifty-nine, I believe. So it's been around for a bit.
I have a couple of just quick questions here, then Laurie, if I don't see any other lights on yet. You have the Public Art Working Group and then the Public Art Selection Panel. I know we'll get into more of the details maybe at that open committee, but are those different or the same?
They're different.
Okay.
So one is a five-person working group made up of three staff, city staff members and two citizens. And the objectives and goals of that particular group is to see that the program kind of meets its objectives as it's growing and, and moving forward. And that particular, those citizen members would help staff members identify people for the selection panel. So it's the selection panels that we would be using if we went with this model, which are similar to a great deal of models across Canada and, and the US, is when there's a competition that goes out to artists, a selection panel is then put together. So for example, if we put out a call to MiMA artists, as an example, you would want to have specific members on that selection panel of MiMA descent or, or knowledge. So each competition is a new selection panel, but the consistency sits with the Public Art Working Group.
And then just a follow-up question, not really connected to it, but a follow-up question nonetheless. You said there are a couple of calls out, so can you share some additional, beyond the recent mural and then the public art project with the schools, can you share some other examples of what you think of when you, and we've had this session before, when you imagine what is public art in a community? So we have a, an idea of what the, who'd be covered on something, something like this.
So to correct perhaps what I said, they're going out. There's two calls that are on their way out, they're not out. The information will, of course, come to you guys first. But we have one particular call that's for a temporary public art piece that we put a call out to all artists, and they would be submitting proposals of an art piece that would be installed in June and come out in October. The ownership of the piece stays with the artist, the community gets to enjoy it for that time period. It's temporary. And then there are permanent, you know, calls to artists for a permanent work of art, and those are works that would stay with the community and become part of the city of Somerside Public Art Collection. And so the first temporary, and these haven't gone out to the public yet, but they're on their way right away, but the first temporary public art piece, we would put a theme, we figured out water because of our coastal, coastal, you know, centric. And the second permanent public art opportunity, we've partnered with Downtown as well as, we've partnered with Lennox Island First Nation, Illinois, and, and Downtown in city of Somerside to put a call out for a piece from a MiMA artist. And so that would be a piece that would go out, and we'll see what kinds of proposals come in. So in terms of the definition of public art, it's, it's obviously like any other art, it's quite broad. But the, the essence of public art is that it's being created to be displayed in public spaces that are always accessible visually and physically. So it's a little bit different than, say, a civic art collection where a piece is collected and it's put in a museum and then doors close at five, right? So that's part of the difference.
The report, the, the information that you've put together is really good, a lot of good information. You made a point about the public art stimulates economic growth by enhancing the city's brand identity, and it also supports creative industries and boosts cultural tourism, all of which contributes to the vitality. And then you go on to point out in one-three
role that is proposed, or it could be reviewed, or I guess considered. With the public art group, you've got community representation, right? And there's many different ways for public art projects to come to fruition through such a program. So it can be community-led, so anyone in the community can come forward and suggest, I want to do this, right? It can be artist-proposed. It can, it can come the other way, right? It can be a city-initiated project. There are times where it could be a direct select. In terms of, it can represent, well, about, you know, this authentic, unique-
Heard a lot of different people say that you meet, or the, the light show on the-
Program or scenario, what can be done from an artistic standpoint through public art that will make our community more just rich of, like, to go in kind of as a paintings or possibly being considered as that's a city-funded project. You have that one percent is help then look after the art projects at the city.
Hit all my chill for this, and I just think, like, recently I went and I went to Portugal, many people just to see isolation, and that is their ma- I mean, there's a lot of history too, but one of the things that drew me in, and one of the first things I did when the committee decides that, or like, the call goes out, the artist is like-
And spaces where you, public art pieces are very site-specific. And then, you know, you may just have to, to wait, done thus far, and with technical services. And then with downtown and this, and say, okay, this is what we're suggesting, but let's wait and see what comes in. But we have this-
Be in on that. Just feel like we've got a lot of exciting things, and I, you know, transportation, public art, it's great.
I think if I could just close with one, you know, if everyone's done, one of the things I would say is that I think the, the attention to really profile the city and the community to everyone else and to ourselves, and it's also a really great opportunity to inspire people. You know, I think we have a lot of great creative citizens, and just having a discussion about public art and, you know, hopefully the eventual adoption of a public art policy and, and working through a program that's solid about, you know, supporting public art projects, it's just really, I think it's a great inspiration.
Thank you very much, Director Lorie. So if council's okay with that, maybe what I'll do is just set up, like I said, a single, I don't know, I made this thing up, a single sitting open committee. It's the first time I've ever heard of it, but it seems reasonable. And we could do a bit of a more detailed dive into it and provide some comments and be able to bring the policy back to council for consideration and potential adoption. We can continue to build off the success that you've had, Lorie, in the, in the course of the past year, and you know, my thoughts on, public art is such an interesting space because it creates dialogue and it creates people who think that the pink umbrellas over the street is the dumbest thing they've ever seen, and what a waste of money, and someone else who says it's the most brilliant. But we're talking about things that help try and express what our community is and, and brings people together and showcases, and gets people out and showcases bits of our community, and what a great way to express as a community what Somerside is then-
Exactly.
Through art. So thank you very much, and maybe we could, hopefully we'll get that started in the next short while. I don't know if we need a whole lot of time sitting around waiting for it, so. I'll send an email out to council and we can set something up.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we have two other items, just, we have two other items, with councillor Cam, George and Recker here to listen to the twenty proposal discussions, so if that's all right, we're, we'll still be here. So we'll just jump ahead to item seven, ACAO updates, and then we'll continue with six, C and D.
All right, I apologize, this package didn't, or this presentation didn't make it into your package. We just, we kind of received the final version from our friend Walter late in the day on Friday, but as, as councils aware, his worship started conversations, and I, to be honest, I forget exactly how they started. But we were approached by a gentleman, Walter Palenik. I hope I'm pre-
I think that's right. The Ukrainian-Canadian Congress, which also has a UCC branch here in PEI, and we, we had a Zoom call with a number of people from the UCC, and, and Walter was the follow-up, who we've been dealing with since.
Well, yeah, and Walter told me today that he's actually, well, he works in the House of Commons, but he's the founder of the Canadian-Ukrainian Twinning Cities Initiative. So we had brought this to council a few months back around whether council was supportive of, supportive of investigating this further, which we have done. We've narrowed the potential cities down to two. The presentation does speak to some of the other twinning partnerships that have already taken place through Canada. I won't go through them all. I think we went through all those, the last time this presentation was before council, but we are at the point where we've narrowed it down to two communities. Kriminence. And there's some information in the package about this community, this population of approximately twenty thousand people. Kremennets. And there's some information in the package about this community. It's a population of approximately 20,000 people. Founded in 1212, 1227. It's almost hard to fathom. And they've been a town since 1431. They currently have some sister cities. They're listed there in Kilgore, Texas, one in France, one in Germany and one in Poland. Some pictures of some of the architecture in that city. Built in the 1600s. Their local economy is primarily based on agriculture, agriculture, forest and woodworking, the chemical industry, some light industrial, trade and services. They also have a utility equipment plant and tourism hospitality. So some similarities there with, with Summerside. Thirty-four counselors. I'm glad you all find the humor in that as well. The other, the other city, I guess that we're still considering, and the goal tonight, I guess, is for, is for council to make a, to make a decision. So is Berezny. How do you pronounce that, Mayor Kucher? Berezny, okay. Population just close to 19,000. Again, founded in 1375. Have some sister, a sister city in Connecticut, another in Germany and one in Poland. Again, some pretty, pretty amazing architecture. Again, their local economy, agriculture, some production of bricks and ceramic hollow blocks, woodworking, cardboard packaging plant, some light industry in the tourism sector. Only 20 counselors, so much more efficient. Six political parties though within their, within their municipality. Again, we, we discussed this previously when we were talking about kind of what a twinning agreement might be. But there are just some of those potential fields of cooperation, development of tourism, cultural, youth, cooperation, sports, science and education, mutual assistance. Then I know his worship reached out last week and maybe you want to speak to that.
Yeah, thanks Gordon. Yes, we had received a list, a longer list and sort of tried to shorten that as well a little bit. A couple of things that we had looked at were coastal cities, but the coastal municipalities that, the coastal municipalities that were sort of before us were much larger. So when we got to like 60,000, we thought that's a bit too big to match Summerside. It's better to have a relatively similar sized municipality. Also, a good chunk of the country is to the east, at least municipalities to the east are not right now focused on any kind of twinning operations. Some of them are under Russian occupation. So it's certainly a, a bit of a different time. I did reach out to UCC, UCC P E I branch, a couple of other folks and also someone in Ukraine who told me that both cities were lovely, which didn't really help me get, get much further. And that was generally what I had heard from everyone was that both would be good partners for the city of Summerside. A couple did say that Kremennets seemed to be a better, a more similar to Summerside. And, but again, the recommendations were that would be a great choice, but either would be as well. So there's not much more to add to, to that. I, I don't, like, they didn't really explain what the difference, except for what I'd said in terms of, they sort of said, "Look, we think it'd be just a, they're, they're closer aligned." Probably more in terms of size, but they're both relatively similar. So they're both somewhat agricultural. We have agricultural, obviously, region surrounding. And the other thing I did look at, I looked at service club connections as well, just on my own, just in terms of like Rotary and Lions. Because those service clubs that operate internationally often can be good connections. I didn't see any of them in either. They do operate in the region. So if council, if we decide to move ahead and proceed with the twinning agreement, I'd suggest we reach out also to our local service clubs. Because you see some of the connections that have been made across North America. Through this initiative have also built partnerships at the service club level and beyond just the municipality. So I guess I would sort of suggest Kremennets, but that's because that was sort of the, that was the feedback I got, but either would be perfectly good.
Counselor Duran?
Just a question. I know we have a couple, I think, at least a couple existing partnerships as well with somewhere in Florida and Ireland?
Dunedin, Florida and Scotland. Sterling. It's not, Sterling's 900th anniversary this year. We did send a delegation to Sterling. We didn't pay for it or anything. Yoga. Yeah. Yoga Segway Greg was going to Sterling. So we, I did, I did sort of exercise some discretion and said he was our official delegation. We signed a certificate and a congratulation. We sent him a flag and he sent pictures back with the mayor of Sterling. It's an interesting delegate, but he was great.
I was going somewhere. Yeah, no, I just, is there any, you know, other than being somewhat, I guess, symbolic? And are those partnerships still, you know, active in any way? And I guess that question goes to, to this as well. Is it, is it, is this whole twinning of cities generally just a symbolic type thing? Or is there actual policies involved?
Yeah, good question. I've asked that as well. So it is really what you make of it. Some cities have built solid relationships and then found joint initiatives and support. I think we would try and do that in this case and share what knowledge and experience we have and vice versa. With Dunedin and Sterling, I believe the connection was through piping. So when I first came into this role as mayor, I did look at Dunedin and Sterling and then realized that they continue to have a very active partnership. So I kind of felt like we were, at some point we'd sort of fallen off and they were still doing the exchanges back and forth and working together. Doesn't mean that that can't come back into action, but I do think it sort of depends on the municipality and what you want to do. We have also had a discussion, at least when we met with the South Korean ambassador here on our Sunbank project and the work that we have done with Sam Sung Giye and had discussions there about possibility connecting the different sister municipality there. Again, it's a lot of information sharing. There is some symbolic nature to it, but it also is what you make of it. And then the last thing I do remember, George Dalton, who's here with us today as well. When we talked about this before, said some really valuable stuff and had some great feedback in terms of some of the connection between Summerside and Ukraine, I think in general with respect to our military history. And we ran into each other the other day and I told them we'd be talking about it again. So expressed an interest to come. So here we are. I don't know if you want to add to the, add to anything, George? Great. Thank you, George. Yeah, thank you. So council, do you want to move ahead? I think, can you go back a slide, Gordon? Just, I think it shows the state, what the next step there? Or is it this one? Or is that not in the slide deck? We've seen a few. No, it's not, I don't think, in the slide deck. I think the next piece is a letter exchange and then there's a Zoom call and, and we can share that with the group. I guess the question tonight is, does council want to proceed? Okay. Kremennets? Okay. And we can share some information around. There's a lot of, I think probably also, you know, having Lori in here in terms of there's a lot of historical, cultural significance, obviously in, in both cities. There may be some great connections. Okay. Thank you, Gordon. So we'll move back to item six C. Counselor Cameron, four-way stop intersections. Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. I, I guess it doesn't really need to necessarily even be four-way stops specific. And I did give two examples of two areas where there's four-way stops just around the corner for me. And issues that have been arising of people just not even stopping at four-way stops. And I don't mean like a rolling stop. I mean straight through, not slowing down, no regard for a stop sign. I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room who has witnessed this. I'm sure there's also lots of residents who see it day-to-day. There is not one day, and I know this sounds like an exaggeration, but I go that way every single day. And I see every single day that at least once someone goes through a stop sign. There are a lot of children around the area. There is a lot of seniors around the area. And I'm just wondering if we can get like some sort of statistic from police services and maybe like how many tickets have been issued for rolling stops? Not necessarily even just that area, anywhere in the city. And is like, I don't know, is there anything that we can do for that other than patrolling more? Yes, that's really the only thing that comes to mind. I don't know if there's any other municipalities. I'm sure there's lots of issues like this, but if there's any other municipalities who have found solutions to this issue. And like I said, it's not only four-way stops. The amount of times I've been either running, biking, walking my dog, driving my scooter. And I have been within inches of being hit by someone who does not stop at a stop sign. And I will apologize to anyone who's run into me in that situation because I've yelled at people when it's very, very close to a pedestrian being hit. But yeah, if there's any possible solution, anything that we can look into, anything that police services has in mind that can help with the situation, I think it would be really greatly appreciated by anyone who walks the streets, which is most people.
Yeah, I certainly chat with police services and see what their commentary is and bring that back. Easy to get the stats as well. I know when we're at our full complement of police officers, which we're trying to get back to right now. When the traffic section is going full-time, we had a, a higher level enforcement that we were able to, to do, both on, on the speeding and then on the rolling and the stop sign type traffic infraction. So certainly get those statistics and have a conversation with police and try to do some research, see if there, what other means there may be.
I know like as far as like stoplights go in other municipalities and bigger cities, if you go through a red light, they take a picture. Is there anything like that for a stop sign? I, I don't know how that would ever possibly work. But I don't, I'm not great with technology, so I don't pretend to understand those things. But like, I don't know if that is something that exists or has ever been looked at. Even to pilot it at a couple of areas, if it does exist. It's also a revenue generator for the city. If people are blown through the stop signs and there's a way for us to catch them without physically being there. I don't know.
I was just thinking, I was saying to, like I said to Rick, like what about like something like, you know, we used to have the dollies that you could move around with the speed on them? Just to make people more aware. Like, is there some kind of like a mobile camera, trail cam that we could move around to different intersections? It might, it, you wouldn't be able to maybe catch people at the time, but you might, might make people more aware of there being monitored more. You know what I mean? I don't know. Is that even something that exists?
Yeah, sure. I do know that there's across, I guess, across the world, there's many nonprofit groups. I mean, not taken in from the world, but there could be some here in Summerside that would be interested to do. Basically, there's studies that you can do, bring people around schools, for example, and they'll count the number of infractions. They'll just count them. You're not issuing tickets or that kind of thing. So I think in terms of what Counselor Cameron's looking at, it's, it's, there's probably few tickets, I'm going to guess, but it happens a lot. So the real data is how often does it happen? So if you're able to coordinate over two eight-hour periods of a particular day, how many times does a, does a sign, does a stop sign get rolled through? It's data. And then you could say, okay, it's, it could add some relevant sum. And I'll particularly say that, yes, I was jogging on Duke and Highland and I was all lit up in lots of neon jogging gear. And that individual did stop. And then I walked in front of them and they didn't stop any longer. And so I was literally doing jumping jacks and I'm a glow. I'm glowing because I have my neon running vest. And I think my expression was, so yeah, I can, sometimes you come within very fractions of your own life. And, and it's, it's that distraction aspect that they did stop in that case, but just kept on going, but didn't look, didn't see.
Yeah, just a, a quick Google search came up with, there's a Canadian company. They actually have this exact product. Like a mobile stop sign camera system and the city of St. Albert. Their police services manager has a pretty good testimonial. I mean, that's just one that came up as we're talking. So the, the technology exists. I don't know what the pricing is like. There's actually a thing here that says zero cost to implement. I don't know if they get a cut or whatever, but you know, you know how these things go. But anyway, the, the point is the product or the technology exists. So it's something we can explore.
Yeah, will do.
Yeah, I'm just curious because you had mentioned two specific sites. I can think of one and it's right by my house, Northumberland and Notre Dame Street. It gets blown. I don't know how many times I've seen somebody blow it and it's just a matter of, it's almost like they don't even notice the sign there. And I've know, I've brought this to the attention of the city before, that the stop sign in that situation is like on the, it's on the actual pole, the electrical pole and not sitting out as other stop signs are. So it's almost like it's missed. So something like a trail cam or whatever Justin found on Google there. Maybe it works for those troublesome areas to bring attention. But then again, maybe those, maybe there's something within those areas that municipal works can look at and see if there's any. works can look at and see if there's anything that comes to mind, whether or not it's the placement of the signs or trees in there or whatever might be obstructing. Sometimes people are just going to blow stop signs and not paying attention. But if there's an area that seems to be happening all the time, there has to be a reason that it's not happening in other areas and in specific areas.
I, I mean, this was my example, just because it's close to my home. I've almost been hit Willow and Northumberland. I've almost been hit at the intersection you were talking about. I've almost been hit at Beaton and Granville, Boswell and Granville. I've almost been hit at Gallant and the other one behind. So it's surprisingly always different people, different cars. I know. But most of those aren't even four-way stops as well. So it's not even just four-way stops. People are just blatantly not stopping. Like all, most of the ones, with the exception of the one that you mentioned, are very, very visible. There's literally not even a bush around the tree. There's no telephone pole. There's no way you can say you didn't see the four-way stop. So I mean, I just think that it's a blatant disregard for people realizing that they can get away with it and they don't care because it is very clear around that area. If you're pulling up, you can see that there's no cars there. So as you're coming up to it, you can see there's no cars there and you're just going to keep going. But the issue is, is that you're not seeing the pedestrian that's there. You're not seeing the child, you're not seeing the senior, you're not seeing the little old man who walks around my neighborhood every single day with a walker and he does not move very fast and he's not getting out of the way if you're not stopping at a stop sign. So it, there is instances where it is visibility issues and we should be addressing that, but there's lots where it is not a visibility issue. People just don't want to stop for the two seconds to get to wherever they're going. It is more than two seconds you're supposed to stop for, according to your driving test.
So listening to Council, maybe suggested path forward here, trying to take bits and pieces. Potentially maybe Council could submit a list of stop sign intersections that are in your ward that you identify as a, and like you're saying, basically everyone. But if we could select a few, so we could start with a limited number, because I know that, I think of the one that I'm most familiar with as well, same problem. And then if staff can look at options for enforcement and review, building off of what Counselor Dronin and Counselor Adams said, that there may be some other options there. So we may be able to potentially trial some of those options at those limited number to start, to see how that works. And then the other would be, we used to have the data from the traffic enforcement unit in the monthly police report. We don't have that anymore. I don't know if that's, we used to, and it was pretty, we had it for a minute and it would say how many tickets were issued and what they were. So that may also be able to help provide us with monthly reporting data. It also helps for us, I think, to know even at Council that like if the traffic enforcement unit isn't functioning because we're short officers, it certainly helps. I do know the intersection that I would identify as the biggest concern that I pass each day when the traffic enforcement unit is there for the few weeks after, the behavior is better and then it reverts back to the, I would call it, I would call it the Summerside stop, which is sort of the roll-through. But I don't know if that would be a starting point to be able to identify some spots, have some options and start capturing our data and look at what works and what doesn't in those spots. That work? And Nick, get the, get to go wherever Ken's buying his neon clothes. And if we can bring that back maybe then to Council in January, February? Does that work for everyone? Does that make, anything? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the item 60 there, left turn lane, Water Street, onto Gillespie. That's Counselor Cameron.
Yeah, but I guess, I don't know, close to a year ago now, I brought this up and there was never any follow-up on it about what we could potentially do. There was kind of discussion that there could be something done, but then nothing ever came forward. So I'm just looking for an update on maybe what we have.
So there is a large apartment complex under construction across the street there. Tech Services Plan, when that building is complete, is to reevaluate that whole intersection and likely bring forward a project to, to line those streets up. I think it's Gillespie and the new entrance there. So as part of that project, there'd be an evaluation of whether a left turning lane is needed. That'd come before Council certainly for, for input. The other piece of that is once the east-west housing corridor road is open, traffic patterns are going to be different, not, so it'll be good to get a measurement of that before we do some of these types of projects. But that intersection is certainly on Tech Services radar for review and most likely putting forward changes in the budget, into the budget process once the large apartment building across the street is completed.
I know we had brought this up before about putting a third lane in on Water Street East from like Reed's Corner, say, up to Gillespie or even, I would suggest even Bay because Bay can be very hard to get out of, right? Yeah. I'm like, I, there is room, especially on like the Ward Eight end of Water Street, to have a third lane in there very easily. The road is wide. There's two lanes plus you have your, I always refer to it as a bike lane, but it's not. It's your white line. Shoulder, that's the word, thank you. And then you have a big piece of grass and then you have your sidewalk. So there's, there's room there for expansion. I know Director Aaron thought it was cuckoo when I said like, what if we do like three lanes and make two of them coming in in the morning and then switch it around like they do on like the bridge in Halifax, for example? And in the afternoon, it's two going out and one coming in. But he sort of chuckled and like the Summerside stop signs, like he was like, how are we going to ever get that going? But I think, yes, the congestion is going to be better from where the housing corridor is coming out to Gillespie and Bay, but you're still going to have your congestion from Reed's Corner till you get up to the housing corridor, right? So that, that stretch, we also need to look at and if we could do it like a study in all in the same area from like, say, Waz down to Reed's Corner, because if the province is saying that it, within the next five years, Reed's Corner is going to be updated, then it would be nice for us to, you know, have everything in place and maybe have ours even done before that so that they can properly align theirs with ours rather than us trying to catch up to whatever they're going to do after the fact. Anyway, but if you look, when you go out, there is plenty of room on the sidewalk side for expansion on the shoulder.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Gordon, but in one of the conversations where we brought up Gillespie once before, so when some of that work gets finished out in Water Street East across from Gillespie, there was going to be a new road put in there, like it'd be a four-way intersection? Am I thinking the right way?
I believe, and I don't want to speak for Director Aaron McDonald, but I believe the intent is to review that and, and basically make it, bring, change the, change where Gillespie meets Water Street.
Right.
To, to line up with the other.
The new road?
The other, the entrance.
The south side?
Right, correct. I'm not sure there's been any analysis yet on whether or not that would be, like have any lights or anything like that, but.
Yeah, no, because I, for some reason, I thought, I asked that question and, and maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I was told there would be traffic lights at that intersection because I constantly calls on it about, because even the crosswalk out there is just painted on the road. There's no flashing lights, there's no, and there's kids up there and there's, but, so I haven't pushed that hard because I, I thought in my mind, I was led to believe that when a little bit more construction gets finished out there and then a road on the south side of Water Street heading towards the, on Water Street East heading towards the water, not directly across from Gillespie, but close enough that they're going to line up the intersection that there would be lights and then proper ways to get across the intersection and so you can't.
I can confirm the first part of it, that I know that's part of the, I say the plan, that's, I mean, it's always budget contingent, right? But the, the plan would be for staff that would bring a project forward. I, I don't know right now whether, where the thought is on lights there or not, but that'll be certainly an option for Council to consider.
So would there be lights on the east-west connector where it meets Water Street East? Do you know if that's in the?
Yes.
Because even that would help, right? Because if you get another stop there, then you're closer to Bay and Gillespie, which then would probably give people a chance to get out.
Breaking traffic. Yes.
And that, and that could work. So that's fine, but, and I could, I don't know, people all out there could live with it. I think that would certainly help and I could live with that. But what I'd really love to see in, in the next comments and about the turning lane and stuff is that farther out on Water Street, and I don't know if it's on Schooner or Starlight, but there was a new crosswalk, lights is put in and, yeah. I would really love to see, yes. And there's one on Bay, but there's nothing on Gillespie. So if we're not putting lights or if that's not in the near plan.
And there's nothing on Starlight.
Yeah, it would be great if there was, yeah, Starlight has it also. It'd be great if there was something on Gillespie too. It's pretty heavy traffic there. There continues to be a little bit of a, a few more houses built up there and it'd be great and safe, safer for the people that walk and want to get down to Water Street that do walk and then the kids that are in the area. Yeah, just thought I'd mention that too, why Nick was saying and about the lane.
The new apartment building being built across from Gillespie, how many units are in that?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
I think.
And Gordon, are you saying we're waiting till that's completed? Do we not already have the? The estimate of where the, where the road is going to go in? Or?
That's a good question. I'd have to follow up with Aaron.
I, I guess I, I wonder if we're already having congestions along that stretch, once that goes, it's going to get worse.
Yep.
And then we decide to budget for work at that, it's going to be really bad for quite a time until we can figure, like if it's not in this year's budget coming, I mean, that's not my ward or area, but if the, like if it's not in this year's budget, it's probably not going to be until the next year. And then if, you know what I mean, just timing wise, I wonder?
Yeah.
I, I think we do, we do great stuff, but I think sometimes we're not as proactive as we need to be in some of these things to see what's coming. And it's obvious that that building is big. There's going to be a lot of residents living there and there's already a lot of traffic along that area. So maybe it's something we should look at if we can get the plans of where that laneway's going in and already get the plans ready for what's coming because we have three counselors here that have just brought up Gillespie and that whole area. The other thing where Counselor Adams mentions the third lane, a lot of times you'll go to municipality cities that it's like dual turning.
Suicide lane.
So, yeah, suicide lane. I hate the aim of it, but if, am I correct in saying a lot of the traffic issues out there come from people trying to turn or onto certain areas and wait and then backs everything up? So that dual lane gets those vehicles, and I'm not an engineer, but get those, gets those vehicles out of the lane into the center. So if it's an easy, there's so many ins and outs along that stretch and it's busy. So I do agree, there's, I, again, I mean, somebody drives the city lots. I enjoy doing that and seeing what's going on, but it's just, it's an area that needs some attention.
I anticipate with the, A, the increased traffic on that area, B, the new road, and C, new development in the area, I anticipate we're going to have to have a professional traffic study done of that whole stretch to see what the best options are moving forward.
Counselor Morrison, I just want to say one thing before I go to you and Carrie, just as a proposal to sort of, again, tying this together. I'm wondering if it would be helpful for Director Aaron to present to us on Water Street East, probably from McEwen all the way to Reed's Corner? With a discussion around the intersection of Gillespie, certainly to your point, Corey, why wait except for maybe budgetary concerns? Also the east-west corridor signalization, how that will look. And then probably a larger discussion on, I think they're called two-way left turn lanes on Water Street East because the traffic count is, we can get, we should certainly get a traffic study, but the traffic count just anecdotally is, is up and we do want to be able to move people through there. So I wonder if Aaron, yeah, could come and sort of give us a, here's that area, here's what we're looking at, here are some possibilities to look at whether or not Council wanted to adopt more of a long-term plan for Water Street East to address some of the issues with respect to congestion and also how people move.
Yeah. It's been one of my pet peeves, I guess, since I get in and, and I, not to chastise anybody else, but it's great that we're going to get lights on Greenwood Drive and Pope Road. But for me personally, from a standpoint of traffic and, and there's no question, two or three times a day, it's quite heavy out there, but it's pretty much heavy all day on Water Street East now. And if, if we can do Greenwood Drive and Pope Road, I really think we owe it to the people on Water Street East to, to luck at that. And, and just to, not to belabor the whole thing, but Kristen sent around a notice the other day for her yearly send in a couple of areas of concern in your, in your own ward and a couple of things for the city. So that's always on my top of mind when I think, when she gets that and I think of that intersection. But I was kind of holding off a little bit till Nick brought it up because in my mind, I, and maybe I misunderstood that, that when that south, the road south of Gillespie or off Water Street East gets built, that there was going to be lights at that intersection anyway. So I thought they were, they were already in the plan and maybe they're not, but, and, a combination of that, the traffic and the fact that lights may make a difference on the east-west corridor for that intersection also. So, but Aaron would know best and it would be nice to get some information and facts and stuff than, and numbers so we can help make decisions and especially as budget time gets close.
Yeah, and even build a more of a long-term plan for Water Street East as a whole, as we continue to see that growth. Counselor Adams?
I know that we worked with the province and they put one in the double left turn or whatever it was, how you referred to it as, in front of Colbries. So now you can turn, coming in, you can turn into Perry and going out, you can turn into Colbries. And it, it has helped a lot. And the province also reached out and they're going to be putting in a right turn lane into Perry this spring, coming spring, summer. It's, the minister indicated it'll be in the budget for this. So that'll be good for the traffic going out because there's tons of room on the, on the shoulder and that'll be paved and a proper lane in there, so.
And just one last statement in regards to my mentioning of being proactive. I think what that does when we're developing areas and we're proactive and thinking about moving ahead, it sort of takes some of that concerns of the residents away. We hear anytime we develop any area of the city, the number one concern that comes forward always is traffic and perceived traffic or real traffic, it's still their concern. So if we're able to show that as we develop the city, we're thinking ahead enough to make the changes needed, i.e. changing Gillespie before the building's open as opposed to waiting for the building to be opened and have months of issues, I think it bodes well for the city and, and any future development that is happening, so.
All right, we're okay with that. We'll coordinate with Director Aaron and then come back to Council and start working on a plan with feedback for Water Street East, the fast-growing part of our city. But it's like, it's.